Keet TV and the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County present a forum for candidates running for the Fortuna City Council. Viewers may submit questions during this forum by calling 707-445-0811. This forum is also being streamed live at keet.org. And now your moderator from the League of Women Voters, Kay Ascarda.
Good evening, I'm Kay Ascarda with the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. Welcome to our live Candidates Forum for the Fortuna City Council. There are three seats open for this election, and with us tonight are four of the five candidates: incumbent Mike Johnson, and Christina Mobley, Arlene Spears, and Henry Watherspoon. The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League never endorses candidates or political parties. We do take positions on issues after extensive study and member consensus. The League is dedicated to providing impartial information about voting and the political process. Membership in the League is open to women and men of 16 years and older. League members are serving tonight as question sorters, timekeepers, courier, and phone volunteers. Their names will appear at the credits after the program. Since the majority of our program tonight will use questions called in from viewers, I encourage you to begin calling in your questions to 707-445-0811. Our volunteers are waiting to take your questions. Here is some information about the job of Fortuna City Council member. Fortuna City Council is responsible for the enactment of local laws, adoption of the annual city budget, and capital improvement program, the review and adoption of proposed policies, agreements, contracts, and other city business items. There's a $300 a month stipend for serving, and each elected council member will serve a four-year term. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows: Each candidate will be given a maximum of one minute to respond to questions previously sent to the League or phoned in from the viewing audience. Questions are screened by League members to eliminate questions of a personal nature and to prevent duplication. The candidates have drawn lots to determine the order of their one-minute closing statement. Now, let's begin the question portion of our program. Again, the number to call is 445-0811. And our first question will begin with Mike. Mike, what skills or experience make you qualified to serve on Fortuna's City Council?
Well, thank you. I have 25 years' experience as an employee in the Public Works Department at the city of Fortuna, the last 10 as General Services Superintendent, developing budgets, working with the capital improvement program, agreements with work with other cities to pool a project. I've been on the Fortuna City Council for the last four years as the incumbent, and I bring an experience being a consensus builder, adopting city budget, and looking at the policies and programs that we have in place, including possible rewriting ordinances and changing contracts. And I think I bring a wealth of experience to the body of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Christina?
Thank you. I've volunteered for probably the last 20, 25 years on various committees, raising funds for the hospital in Fortuna, working on the Measure E Committee since inception, so I've had a lot of practice working with bodies committees to get things done. I've also worked in customer service for the last 35 years, and I think that those qualities go a long way in working with other members, both on the council and with the city.
And Arlene?
Thank you. Good evening. Since 1976, the Eel River Valley has been my home. I attended Heightsville Elementary School, Fortuna High School, and College of the Redwoods. I stand for integrity, especially when it relates to the allocation of government funding. For many years, I was the business manager of a school district where I created and maintained a $10 million budget with a three-year forecast. I am currently employed by a health services organization as a grants and contracts analyst. I recognize the value of teamwork and consensus building, and Fortuna's city manager works well with our city council to get things done, and I will work hard to keep this good thing going while moving Fortuna forward. I will be prepared for city council meetings, ask thoughtful questions, and research topics before voting on city matters. I don't own a business, my agenda is you. It is your thoughts, your needs, and your voice that will fuel my actions.
Thank you. And Henry? Can we have your answer to that?
Of course. I think the two biggest things that I bring with me in terms of experiences and tools tie in with the fact that I've owned and operated a small business for quite some time now, so I have a lot of experience with customer service and managing budgets. Overall, I have a very strong desire to work with the community and be involved. I'm still pretty young, so I have a long way to go, but I'm looking forward to serving the city of Fortuna and making it an even friendlier city.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Arlene, and it's one that was phoned in. And the question, Arlene, is what are your thoughts on Measure E?
Thank you. Measure E funding has really helped out the city of Fortuna. We've been able to have officers in our police department, detectives, and expanded our parks and recreation department. And the Measure E tax is on the parcels, and...I'm sorry, excuse me. It's actually a sales tax, and a portion of that is given directly to us through the Measure E funds. Thank you.
Mike, your answer to that?
Measure E has been a lifesaver for Fortuna. It funds public safety, parks, youth programs, programs for seniors, and it fills a gap that was opened up when the redevelopment agencies dissolved. With this inflationary economy we have now, it's been a very necessary thing. We've been able to keep our police department staffed, we've been able to keep the parks open, it's allowed for recreational basketball sports, and programs for seniors, including rides to Eureka for medical appointments with our senior bus. It is a necessary thing, and we have a team committee working on that to see that it's spent correctly. Thank you.
And Henry? Measure E?
I think Measure E is definitely something that has stimulated Fortuna in a lot of positive ways. There's more that I want to learn about it, and there's more to be learned about it, for me at least. Overall, I'm glad it's around. I think it's given us an opportunity to look into other avenues to help keep the city afloat per se. So while Measure E is nice, I think we should take advantage of the time that we have it around and while we still have those funds to pursue other avenues, looking forward into the future.
And Christina?
I, as I said before, I've served on the Measure E Committee since inception, so I've been part of the decision-making. We have been able to give new equipment to the police department, supply positions to the police department, purchase property to extend some of our park areas. It's been a fabulous thing, and I'd actually like to see it continue and continue to be voted in for as long as people are willing to do it. It's been great for the city.
Thank you all. And Henry, the next question will start with you. This is another one phoned in, and it is, would you make any changes in the management structure of the city of Fortuna? Explain any changes that you would recommend.
I think I'll keep it sure and sweet. Sweet. I think the management structure is functional as it is, so if there are things that the public wants to bring up to potentially change the management structure, then by all means, bring those items up. But from my perspective, as it stands, it's functional and it's working the way it should, so I don't think anything needs to be changed.
Thank you. Arlene, you're next on that question?
Thank you. Well, I would talk to each department, and I would talk to the city manager first of all, and see what his take is on the management structure of the city, and then also talk to the city of Fortuna. And is there an issue? Is there something that isn't being managed correctly? And is there something we can do to address that? So I would definitely ask questions, listen to, and I would have responses, and I would get back to people, and maybe we should even have a separate committee on investigating this and looking into other cities, and how do they manage their departments? So I think just investigating is what I would suggest doing. Thank you.
And Christina?
I think that our city managements ran really well, what I can see on the surface. You really can't make a decision on any changes that would be made until elected to city council and actually working together hand-in-hand with the different departments to see. I also think that you need to have an open mind and not jump the gun on things when people come to you, that you have to look at all avenues to see which direction it should go.
Thank you. And Mike?
Well, I think that we have a very good city manager. We're in a good place right now. Our department heads, our finance director keeps a very close eye on things, as well as trends coming down the road and legislative issues. We have a great police chief right now. We've had good police chiefs throughout the years, but we definitely have one right now. We are in a good place, and I think that I would not want to make a lot of changes right now. We seem to be running along smoothly, or ahead of the curve. Our issue right now is to get through this economy and this power problem that we have. Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm going to remind our audience to phone in your questions to 445-0811. And the next question will begin with Christina. This is kind of a long one. It was generated by a voter. "Seniors need an advocate on the council, specifically one who understands that corporate land ownership of Fortuna's Senior Mobile Home Park has resulted in space rents becoming unaffordable. It's a common story known as profit over people. Would you support a city ordinance to control that?"
I would need more information and more research done. Overall, I think that rent control has its pros and cons, so definitely a lot of research would need to be done. I do empathize with the seniors, as well as people who are working minimum wage jobs, and the rents are going high everywhere. So to answer, I don't know if I could vote yes or no. I would have to research it and find out more information.
Thank you. And Henry?
Personally, I don't think I'm educated enough on the matter to give a very thorough answer, but just off the top of my head, I think it's important that the city does its part to help its citizens. So pursuing that and potentially educating ourselves on it and seeing what avenues we have to help support our senior community is very important, and I think that's what I'd go with.
Thank you. And Mike?
Well, that issue is something that we would have to look into. We don't generally want to dictate how a private business operates, but we would want to look into the matter at hand if they are fulfilling their obligation. At this time, we know rents are crazy all over, and it's not a comfortable thing, but we want to make sure that the people have a place to live, that they can pay their utilities, and we'd have to look and see what avenues are available. We can't just step in and dictate. Thank you.
And Arlene? Your answer to that?
Thank you. Could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah. "Seniors need an advocate on the council, specifically one who understands that corporate land ownership of Fortuna's Senior Mobile Home Park has resulted in space rents becoming unaffordable. It's a common story known as profit over people. Would you support a city ordinance to control that?"
Thank you. Well, what do you do about corporate greed? You can't cancel out corporate greed, and that's what's going on. And we would need to look at, does Fortuna want to have some rent-controlled spaces? And is that something that we would really want to do? And I think it's important, too, to understand that when a corporation or a business is owned by somebody, they have their right to do what they want to with it, as long as they follow the ordinances of the city. So I don't know if we want to get in there and do that. I just think we need to look at corporate greed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next question will begin with Arlene, and it is, "To what extent do you support the Fortuna Police Department?"
Thank you. I fully support the Fortuna Police Department. I would really love to see the Fortuna Police Department expand in a way that will make them more accessible to the community and more involved with the community. And I know they're doing a lot now, and we've had to cut things back during COVID, but I know it's really important for them to be at different fairs and festivals and safety fairs, and really get in there with the community. And I'd also like to see a mental health expansion of the Fortuna Police Department. And does that mean maybe having more positions on staff that certainly address the mental health issues and can be a resource for the police officers? Thank you.
All right, Christina?
I 100% support the police department in our city. That's one of my platforms, actually, is to continue the great communication between the city and the police department, make sure that their needs are met so that they are able to deal with what they have to on a daily basis: mental health, the homeless people, just citizens in general being upset and calling them to vent. I think they do an amazing job. Thank you.
And Henry? Your answer for that?
I also 100% support the Fortuna Police Department. I believe they play a major role in keeping our friendly city friendly, and I'm happy to see and hear that Measure E has given them the tools they need and the funding they need to continue their growth as our society grows. And like Arlene mentioned, with the mental health issues that are ever-present, it's definitely important that we give our police department those resources that they need in order to provide the training and tools required to complete their job.
Thank you. And then Mike?
Well, thank you. I 100% support the police department also. I've seen them and doing their job, having to meet people on what is probably the worst day of that person's life, working with them and solving issues, calming people down, dealing with traffic accidents, and most recently, that incident at Fortuna High School, and working with parents. I think that they definitely need to be fully funded and have the technology, the tools that they need to do their job. And I believe our community supports the police department, and that's a 100% kudos to our community for supporting them in such a way as they do, and thank you for this question.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And you'll be up on the next one first. And this is another one phoned in from somebody in your community. It is, "What have you done to be an ally to our LGBTQAI+ community and other underrepresented members of the community?"
Well, I believe that everybody deserves respect, to be treated kindly, compassionately, respectfully, and I have fully supported that. Our community is a big cross-section of the United States, and we have people from the BIPOC community, as well as the LGBTQ community, and they deserve to be supported, to be cared for, to be respected in their beliefs and position, and everyone deserves that, regardless of ethnicity, gender, marital status, whatever. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Arlene?
Thank you. Well, I really believe that everyone needs to feel that they matter, and everyone needs to feel validated. And so if there's a discrimination against anybody for any reason in the city of Fortuna, I would want to know about it, and I would want to address it. And I think, you know, offering the opportunity for festivals to be held in Fortuna as well. I know we have some in Arcata and Eureka for Pride Month, but we could also have something like that in Fortuna. If there was a call for it in our community and there was an interest for it, I would support that. So I would really support just being respectful to everybody in Fortuna and whatever that takes. Thank you.
Thank you. And Christina?
I, myself, have not actively worked on any committee for that, but I always believe that everybody deserves their voice to be heard and to be treated with respect and compassion, no matter what their beliefs are or their sexual orientation. None of that should matter in any decisions that are made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Henry?
To tie back to the question, I haven't done anything specifically myself to contribute towards the community in that regard, but a firm belief of mine is to treat people kindly and treat people like people, regardless of who they are. So, you know, that's pretty much the answer. I think, you know, Fortuna as a city and the community around it ultimately just needs to treat people kindly and continue on our way, and that's a big part of keeping our friendly city friendly.
Thank you all. Don't forget to call your questions in, 445-0811. And Henry, you're going to start this next round, and it is another one phoned in. We're getting some good questions phoned in. "What, in your opinion, is the most important section of the capital improvement program, or plan, rather?"
Well, I'll have to keep this one short and sweet, as I don't believe I'm educated enough on that topic to give a thorough answer, so I'll have to pass on that one.
Okay, that's fine. And Mike?
Well, one of the biggest issues that's lurking out there right now is the State Water Resources Control Board and the basin plan, and our discharge from the wastewater treatment plant. And I think that's one that's lurking out there. It's not going to be a quick, easy fix, but we do have a plan, and I think that's the most important right now. The second one would probably be our paving projects. Most everyone interfaces with the roads and understands what's going on, so that would be the second. Not yet in the capital improvement program, but lurking out there is the electrical power issue in the Eel River Valley, but specifically Fortuna. I think that's coming up. Thank you.
All right. And Arlene? Your answer, please?
Thank you. I think that the capital improvement plan, the most important things are the roads and our wastewater treatment. I would have to agree with Mike on that, especially, I'm thinking of the wastewater treatment and the fact of, I was just reading about the rising tides, and, you know, the Humboldt County area has the highest rising tides on the US West Coast. And so we need to look at, can we flush our toilets in 20 years? You know, that kind of thing. And so that's something, I think it's really going to take a lot of thought and a lot of money, and we need to take action now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Christina?
I think that our road department, that needs to be taken care of first. It's one of the things that is continuously, obviously, used. It takes a beating every day, so it's going to be a continuous project. I don't ever see it going away. You're going to finish and then go to the other end of the city and start over again. Also, the electrical is going to be a big issue for the city of Fortuna over the next several years, until we can find an alternate source of energy to use. Thank you.
All right. And we're going to go on with Christina being the first one on this one. Another one phoned in. "What are your thoughts on marijuana?" That's a broad topic, but what are your thoughts on marijuana?
That is a very broad topic. My thoughts are, to each their own. If people want to use it, they want to use it. If the question is, "Do I think that we should allow dispensaries in the city of Fortuna?" No, I don't. I think that it comes with a lot of headaches. I think that there would need to be quite a bit of research done to show if it would be worth it money-wise to bring it into the city, because it would cost a lot of extra with our police department. And I think it would probably turn some tourists off that would not want to come and do shopping around those areas. Again, personal use is fine, but I'm just not for bringing it into the city.
Okay, thank you. Arlene?
Thank you. This is a complex economic and social issue. As a city council member, I feel it is my job to listen to the residents of Fortuna and to provide opportunities to inform about the pros and cons of retail sales of cannabis products. I was speaking with, I was doing some research, and in the Ria Del area, they have a couple of dispensaries there, and I just asked if they, or I was talking to their mayor as well, if they've had increased criminal activity, and they're, no, just having their presence, having the stores open, and they're able to see what's going on in the city. And then plus, over 50% of their customers are from Fortuna, and we might be surprised that a lot of their customers are older people that are seeking alternatives for pain relief. So I really do think the Fortuna City Council should revisit their stance on allowing retail sales of cannabis in Fortuna and find out what the community wants. Thank you.
All right. And Henry? Can we have your answer for that?
To go straight back to the question itself, I have a pretty neutral, per se, standpoint on marijuana. To each their own. I've been around it quite a bit, and it's hard not to here in Humboldt. For a long time, the lumber industry was the lifeblood of Humboldt, and then we kind of transitioned over to marijuana, especially as it became legalized. And it's a sad state that we're in right now with, you know, the pricing and how local grows are impacted with that, and that's definitely a direct result of the pandemic and the economy as a whole. So I definitely think marijuana has its place, especially a medicinal point of view. And ultimately, I think it's up to the people from the dispensary standpoint if they want that in the city of Fortuna or not.
All right, thank you. And Mike? You're the last one on that question.
Well, thank you. When Prop 64 passed, the city council enacted a urgency ordinance, because if it wasn't done, we would have been just left up to the state dictates. So it was passed as a no retail, no production in Fortuna. Shortly thereafter, we started getting complaints, because when the county permitted growing in their land, in the county, it was being done right at the edge of the city-county interface, and people had grows right over their back fence, outside their bedroom window, and various places like that. They came to the council, they spoke to us, the overwhelming standing-room-only audience said, "No retail, no cannabis in Fortuna." We passed another ordinance adopting no cannabis in Fortuna, and that is where we're at. When people come and speak to the council, make wishes known, say that they want to open that up, it will happen. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And you're going to be the first one for the next question, and that is kind of a long one as well. "Part of your job as a council member will be to create, approve, and understand the city's multimillion-dollar annual budget. What actual experience do you have that makes you qualify for such an important duty? And do you feel Fortuna is managing it in a professional and knowledgeable manner?"
That is a mouthful. But yes, I have experience, as I said, for 10 years. That is a mouthful. But yes, I have experience, as I said, for 10 years prior to being on the council. I was the general services superintendent, developing a budget for five different divisions. I not only developed it, but I worked with the lead team, working to make sure that it was complied with and that it was adequate to do the job that we needed to do. Now that I'm on the city council, I look at things the same way, and we work together to take the budget that is presented, examine it, work with it, and make sure that it's adequate to do the job that is required to do. I also have a household budget that I have to live within. I understand what budgeting is. It's a look ahead to see what's going to happen and guessing what we're going to need. And so far, we've managed to do that correctly at my household and in the city of Fortuna. Thank you.
Henry, it's your turn for that long question. If any of you need these reread, you can ask me to repeat it.
I was raised in a family surrounded by those who were involved in local business, so from a young age, I had somewhat of a grasp of it. And from the age of 15, I started my own business, and I ran that for quite a while. So I have a pretty in-depth history of budget management and customer service and things like that. So I think I'd be a good fit for the council in that regard. And I'm always looking to further my knowledge on the topic and grow as a person and grow as a businessman. Fortuna, in terms of managing their budget, I think has done a great job. I think Measure E has been a big part of keeping Fortuna afloat, per se. So ultimately, those are the skills that I'll bring with me in regards to budget management.
Thank you. And then Christina?
I have oversaw budgets in, for the last 30-odd years, 40 years almost, in my work. My other job, I oversaw three different departments. And I had to do budgets, keep to the budgets, do incentive programs, make sure everything fell within the parameters that we were allowed for our budget. My current position as a business manager for a construction company, we do budgets for contracts for our projects. We have to stay on budget in order to make any money on the projects. I feel very comfortable in that part. And I think Fortuna is doing a great job with our budget.
Thank you. Arlene?
Thank you. Well, I do have experience in this area. I was a business manager at a school district for many years, and I was responsible for creating and maintaining and keeping a $10 million budget balanced while providing a three-year forecast. And Fortuna is doing a good job. We have a very healthy reserve. I don't know if the reserve is more than it should be, or should be investing more money in buying maybe different properties in the area. And I'm not too sure about the managing all the funds because we just had a meeting where we had $107,000 that we didn't know what to do with, and so we gave it to Arcata. And so there are some, we do have some areas that we need to expand and grow in and have maybe more people on staff to manage the funds. Thank you.
All right, thanks all. We're moving along pretty fastly, pretty quickly here. So if you want to get another question in, you need to call right away 244-50811. And Arlene, you're going to start with this next round. And it is, do you feel global warming should influence issues and policy in Fortuna?
Thank you. Yes, I do feel that global warming should reflect in our issues in Fortuna. And I would like to see, gosh, we could do so many ordinances and mandates and change our constructions laws or, you know, retail development and have more like solar panels and green energy built into our housing and in our businesses. We could gear more towards, you know, a green city. Look at other cities in the area and what they're doing to make their places more green. And so I think we have a long ways to go. I think we do need to make a priority. I'd like to see a department specifically for that approach on climate change in the city of Fortuna. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina?
I don't think that we need to do much in the city of Fortuna compared, well, because of global warming. Maybe we can encourage people to bike more, walk more. But overall, I think that it's, what's going to happen is going to happen there. I don't know that there's anything much that our city can do to help that problem. Thank you.
Okay, and Mike?
Recently, I was looking in our community development portion of our monthly report, and under the building permits, I noticed that there were 15 permits taken out to install solar. I have solar on my house, so that's one thing that can be done, but that's, we have, my position is on HCOG, the representative for the city of Fortuna, we recently adopted regional transportation plan, which included many aspects of things that we can do for low-carbon transit, electrical vehicles, electric fleets, buses, hydrogen buses, many things such as that. The biggest thing that Fortuna can do and are doing is adopting the green building codes as they come down, ensuring that houses that are built comply with that and will contribute to a smaller carbon footprint. Thank you.
And Henry, your answer to that question?
I think it's important for Fortuna in whatever capacity it can to be aware of global warming and take action to, you know, with the future in mind, especially with the energy issue we have coming and is already here. So definitely renewable energy and other avenues for renewable energy are important to look at. Since our development is going to be hindered by that energy issue, it's also something to be concerned about because Fortuna is right on the river and we see a direct impact by our ecosystem that surrounds us. So it's something to be ever-present of.
Okay, thank you. The next question is on energy, and it says, do you plan to attend the Board of Supervisors meeting on November 1st with PG&E to discuss the providing of power to Humboldt County? And we're starting, I'm sorry, I didn't warn you. We're starting with Christina on that one.
No, I do not plan on attending that. I do think that it's important that we come up with a plan for the future for the energy. I'd like to see a countywide task force for all of the affected entities so we can come up with a plan that will come up with alternative energy. Maybe there's grants that are available that we could get for our different cities that would help with that. I'm curious to see the outcome of that meeting, but I think we're still in the very first gathering knowledge to see what we need to do. So probably as we get more into further meetings, I'll attend, but not this first one.
Thank you. And your thoughts, Arlene?
Thank you. Yes, I will be attending this Board of Supervisors meeting on November 1st. I'm excited to hear what PG&E has to say and what the issues are, what they're really doing about it, and how they can support our community. Because we are important here in Humboldt County. I know they think we're just up here in Northern California somewhere, but we are a big community, and we have a lot of needs that they need to be addressing and make a priority for us. And so I may get up and speak during oral comment and just let them know that we are an important part of California, and we need to be taken into consideration. And they need a long-term plan, a long-term goal, and they are responsible for that goal. Thank you.
All right. And the next one is Henry?
I do have plans on attending that meeting, which I just became aware of. I think it's important to be aware of how PG&E is operating. And even if the conversation is at a very early stage, it's very important to be there and get a foot in the door and start that conversation and see what PG&E has to say and what the future holds for Fortuna and our development plans.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. I do plan on attending that meeting. I've been debriefed on several other meetings that have taken place. We've been working closely with all the electeds, Second District Supervisor Bushnell and other state representative assemblyman Jim Wood, Senator McGuire, and working with that. I believe there's a meeting with the PUC coming up. And the meeting at the Board of Supervisors chambers will follow that meeting and maybe get some more information on that. But it's impossible to overstate the magnitude of how this affects all cities and communities south of Fortuna and Fortuna itself. A big problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Henry will be the first one to address the next question. And this one just came in from the call-in, and it says, an ordinance passed in 2021 in part said that people cannot be in parked cars between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. What is the point of that law? But when will we get a new homeless shelter? So I guess it wants you to address the plans for homeless shelter in Fortuna.
Well, that's a good question. To put it simply, from what I just heard, I don't understand the point of that ordinance. It seems as if it discourages even more so than already does for people who are struggling to have a place to stay. So ultimately, I think the city should do the best it can, the best it can and the most it can to treat people like people and understand that especially now in our economy, the state of our economy and the state of our society, that we need to do what we can to support people in whatever stages of life they're in.
Thank you. Arlene, your thoughts on that?
Thank you. I did not know we had this ordinance, and it makes me sad. I mean, we have to meet people where they are. If somebody's living in their car, there's a reason for that. I mean, this ordinance obviously was written by people who've never had to live paycheck, by paycheck to paycheck. And I think, like, we do need a homeless, even a day facility or even a managed area, camping area where they can park their cars and where they can provide, we can provide services. And we could have used that $107,000 we just gave to Arcata to start that out. We will be getting this money every year for the next five years, is my understanding. So hopefully, we'll have a plan for it next time. So, yeah, I think that this, we need to meet people where they are. Bottom line. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Christina?
I do think that we do need some kind of homeless shelter. I think it would really help the police department, our community that are homeless at the moment. I don't know if we can provide for everybody, though. And there are, quite a few of the homeless are mental health patients that do not want to be. They think that they would be policed if they go to some kind of shelter. So they prefer to be out. It would be nice if they had a place to go get a warm meal, though, and take a shower and get clean clothes if we could. I don't know how that will happen. I think it would take a lot of commitment, and it would require somebody to provide property or donate property to even think about considering that. I think that would be a long-term plan, though. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike, your answer for that?
Thank you. Well, the city of Fortuna has partnered with the Arcata House to provide services in Fortuna. And we have the means to, someone's on the street, someone's in crisis, we can get ahold of someone. There have been motel vouchers given out, especially in the cold weather, wet weather times. So we do have, we, at this time, do not have the means to provide a full shelter, but we have reached out to work with other agencies to provide that. And we have not just turned it back. Now, as far as the ordinance goes, I myself want to look at that and read it. I know of another ordinance that was enacted, but I do not remember that one. So I can't speak to it. Thank you.
Okay. And I think this is going to be our last question. We're getting pretty close to time. And it will begin with Mike. Do you believe the city of Fortuna should subsidize solar installation? And if so, why?
I don't necessarily believe the city of Fortuna should subsidize solar installations. We have a means to, see, as I said, we have 15 going in right now. I have one on my house. There are some that have been there for a long time. New houses are built with a solar requirement, and that provides power for the house. I'm not sure that they're all big enough to provide excess power to go back into the grid, but they do have solar on new homes. To provide a subsidy implies that you have money upfront to provide that subsidy, and I don't know where in our budget we could find that right now. There might be grants. There might be something that we could pursue, but I haven't seen it yet. And it's something that we could do research on. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Christina?
I don't think Fortuna should subsidize the solar energy. I think that we are not in a financial position to do that. It would be nice if we were, but we are not. I think that there are different programs and companies that can help people file for grants to discuss solar energy, to help put it in. They can take out loans, pay them back at a low interest rate. And I think that we all have to do our part, but I don't think this is something the city can do for our citizens.
Arlene, would you speak to that question, please?
Thank you. Well, the city of Fortuna, that would be a big thing for the city of Fortuna to take on. I know we have our RCEA, the Rapid Coast Energy Authority. They work with a lot of grants, with a lot of solar energy. And I think having, working more closely with them and seeing if we can get more programs like that in Fortuna, and maybe not even have it just be solar, but just something green energy. And so I think that we could do a lot more in that area. And I think that we could have a subsidy program, but it would need to be, the way it's tailored and funded would need to be really thought out and planned. But I think we could do that. Thank you.
And Henry?
I'm speaking from experience here, as I've been involved in the solar industry for approximately five years now. And I've seen a lot of corrupt business practices, especially when I spent time living in the city. So going on to the subsidy aspect, it's kind of a difficult topic to tackle without doing more research on it. But I believe Fortuna needs to do its part to encourage homeowners, as the state is, to have solar and renewable energy a part of these new structures and houses that are going up. I don't necessarily think, well, I know that we don't have the money, per se, to do it at this time, but it is something that we need to look forward to in the future as ignoring it is kind of not the best decision.
All right, thank you all for your very thoughtful answers to the questions that were, almost all of those were phoned in tonight. And I do appreciate that. So to close the program, and we will hear the closing statements. You have one minute each to do that. And we're going to start with the way that you drew your starting order. And Mike, you're first. Henry is second. Arlene is next, and Christina is the last one. So we'll start with you, Mike, for your one-minute closing.
Thank you. I thank the voters for electing me in the previous election in 2018 and the time I've spent for the last four years serving them. I'd like to think that I've been a good steward of your trust and the money and budget decisions and policy decisions that we've had to make. I thank you for that. I look forward to another four years with my experience that I've built on, my collaborative partnerships with the Humboldt County Association of Governments, the different cities, Arcata, Eureka, Fortuna, Riedel, as we all work together. We need to work together to accomplish our goals for our own cities. And I look forward to that. I thank you for the trust you've placed in me, and I thank you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Henry, for your closing statement?
I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters and Keet for putting on such a great forum and following that up with saying that even though I'm young and I still have a lot to learn, I believe I have the motivation and the ideas to I still have a lot to learn, I believe I have the motivation and the ideas to help improve our city and help grow it as time goes on. And ultimately, it's up to the voters, but even if I don't get elected, I'm going to be much more involved in the community that I was born and raised in, and I look forward to what the future holds for the friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Arlene, for your closing statement?
Thank you. Well, I'm running for city council because I love Fortuna. For more than 40 years, Fortuna has been my family's home, and Fortuna is the best, and we need to attract the best and keep the best. And our general plan supports economic growth and diversity through local businesses, retail development, and employment opportunities. And we must protect our community's health and safety and quality of life. If elected, I will provide continued efficient and cost-effective execution of the city's missions and goals, and I will make certain that we have the policies in place to protect our community and keep us safe. I will use my numerous years of fiscal management experience to keep Fortuna moving forward as a community of opportunity, growth, and diversity. I ask you to allow me the opportunity and honor to directly improve the lives of our community based upon a foundation of integrity by voting for me, Arlene Spires. Thank you.
Thank you. And Christina, for your one-minute closing?
Thank you. I have spent the last 20 to 25 years volunteering on different committees for the city, for the hospital. Last, since the inception of Measure E, I've been on that committee. I think that becoming a city council member is the next progression for me. I feel very passionate about our city and all of its citizens. I fully support the police department and the fire department. I think that we need to continue lines of communication so that they have everything that they need. I'm not afraid to ask the difficult questions or do the research necessary to help make any decision necessary as a city council member, and I look forward to being your advocate on city council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for participating tonight, and this concludes our regular, part of our regular program. So I would like to thank KEAT TV for airing these forums, the KEAT staff, and tonight's League volunteers, and the candidates especially for running for office, and also viewers for tuning in. And if you would like more information about the League, please call 444-9252, or you can write to us at Post Office Box 3219 in Eureka. Also, don't forget, you can check out our website at LWVHC, that stands for League of Women Voters of Humboldt County, dot org. For more information about the candidates and the elections, go to Voters Edge website at votersedge.org/CA. I urge all viewers to consider contributing to KEAT TV. It's through viewer memberships and contributions that KEAT TV can continue to present these programs, which are so important to our community and to our democracy. I'd like to thank those of you who took the time to phone in your questions. Almost all of the questions tonight were phoned in, which sometimes we get them emailed to us earlier, and I did have a couple of those, but that shows that you're listening and you're responding to the things that came up from your candidates and what they were saying. Through that, we all can get a clearer picture of the issues in our community because of your questions and your interest in what's going on in the city of Fortuna. And finally, I would like to thank the candidates themselves for taking the time from their hectic schedules, and I know it's, it gets pretty hectic when you're running for office. So thank you for taking the time to answer the questions of the voters. Thank you also for having the dedication to democracy to run for this important office, and that's what makes our democracy go, is when people step up, and even if you don't win, you're involved in the community, and that's what is important. So thank you all for watching, and please return your vote by mail, ballot in the mail in a secure drop box at a polling place, or vote in person at the precinct of your choice or where you're assigned on November 8th. Power is in your vote. Together, we make democracy work. So thank you all again, and thank you, audience.